Alderman Kurkowski. Oh, pardon me. Excused. Yeah, but. Alderman Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Pledgeable agents. Do we have any veterans in the audience? Arden, you're a vet? Agents.
The flag of the United States of America. And we are one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Arden. I did not know you were a veteran. Thank you for your service. Approval of minutes. Everybody had a chance to take a look.
It will move to approval minutes of meeting of April 3, 2017.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Okay. Moving forward, we have to take care of some housekeeping business. We have election of common council president. Do we need an explanation on it? Or should I give you guys the breakdown? Or do we want to have Melissa do it? Oh, just for your information, Melissa Carles is on speakerphone. So if we have any questions, we'll have to get Melissa on board here. Just so you're all aware of it, and everybody in the room's aware of it, our city attorney is present. So as usual, common council president, the nomination. Nominations will open. Anybody can nominate. When there are no more nominations, we will close it. It is held by a secret ballot, and a simple majority will be declared the winner. Any questions? Okay. We'll open the floor for nominations.
Toman will make a motion to nominate Alderman Ken Gail.
Are there any other nominations? Third call. Are there any last nominations? Okay. Seeing none, we will close nominations.
As a clarification, do we need a second on that or not? Maybe Melissa could. I'm not sure.
I don't think we do, but let's check. Melissa, question. Do we need a second on the nomination for common council president?
Do you think we need a motion?
Oh, yeah, you do. You need a motion to close it. I don't think you need the second. Melissa, you with us?
I am. All nominations are in, and there is a.
Okay. So we could cast unanimous. We could close the motions.
Okay, Toman will make a motion to close the nominations. Let's go second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Okay. With that, we can cast a unanimous vote, or we can go through the motions and turn the paper in. If you would, pass your papers to the center, and the clerk will read the results.
Alderman Gail. Alderman Gail. Alderman Gail. And Alderman Gail. So five votes, Alderman Gail.
Okay. Congratulations, Alderman Gail. Again, we will be going through later in the agenda and the appointments, and we'll go through that whole process for the new Alderman, is how that works. Moving right along, when our city clerk is ready, we have a couple of recognitions. So first one is a resolution to our former Alderman of the 3rd District, Mark Verhalen. Would you like to read the resolution, please?
Certainly. Resolution number 11807-041817, by committee of the whole. Resolution of appreciation to Mark Verhalen as 3rd District Alderperson. Whereas Mark Verhalen was first elected to the position of 3rd District Alderperson on April 3, 2007, and served until April 20, 2009. Whereas Mark Verhalen was again elected to the position of 3rd District Alderperson on April 7, 2015. And whereas Mark Verhalen during his term served on the License Committee, Small Claims Committee, and Traffic and Safety Committee. And whereas Mark Verhalen was committed and engaged in the strategic planning of the city. And whereas Mark Verhalen has served the best interests of the city and the residents of the 3rd District. And whereas the city of Oak Creek has benefited from his contributions to city government as an alderperson. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek, for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek, their sincere appreciation be and the same is hereby extended to Mark Verhalen for his service to the city. Be it further resolved that his resolution will be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Mark Verhalen, introduced and adopted this 18th day of April, 2017.
Thank you, Kathryn. So again, I'd like to extend my thanks also to Alderman Verhalen. He's done a lot of good things for us here in the city, was part of a lot of things that went forward here over the last few years, and I want to thank him for his time, his talent, his experience. With that, anybody else have anything to say? Comments? Not motion?
It will move to approve resolution 11807-041817, a resolution of appreciation to Mark Verhalen as 3rd District Alderperson.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along, we have one more proclamation. This is for Lee Norman Rizley, who is receiving his Eagle Scout Award. Kathryn.
Council proclamation number 17-06. Congratulations to Lee Norman Rizley for receiving the Eagle Scout Award. Whereas the conferring of an Eagle Scout is one of the highest awards that can be bestowed upon a Boy Scout. And whereas such award is an earned award in that the recipient must perform and successfully complete and pass the rigid requirements exacted to achieve an Eagle Scout Award. And whereas less than 4% of all Scouts actually achieve this goal. And whereas, at a court of honor to be held at Divine Mercy Parish on April 30, 2017, at 1:30 p.m. an Eagle Award will be conferred upon Lee Norman Rizley. And whereas, as his Eagle project, Lee chose to build, assemble, and install 16 bluebird birdhouses in Grant Park in South Milwaukee. And whereas, Lee coordinated the efforts of 12 volunteers to assist with the construction and assembly of the birdhouses, putting in a total of over 63 man hours of work. And whereas, in harmony with the Milwaukee County Parks Natural Areas Coordinator, Lee arranged for the birdhouses to be installed in various locations of Grant Park. And whereas, many species of cavity nesting birds have declined because of habitat reduction, and it is with hope that by installing more birdhouses in Grant Park, that the eastern bluebird population, along with population of other cavity nesting birds, will increase in southeastern Wisconsin. And whereas, the Oak Creek Common Council wishes to recognize this noteworthy achievement of Lee Rizley. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek hereby extend their congratulations to Eagle Scout Lee Norman Rizley for having an Eagle Scout Award conferred upon him by the Boy Scouts of America. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of the meeting, and the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Lee Rizley, dated this 18th day of April, 2017.
Thank you, Kathryn. And I did have the honor of being invited out there on April 30, and I will present that proclamation for him on behalf of the city. It's quite an accomplishment for this young man, so something to be proud of. With that, motion.
It will move to approve council proclamation 17-06. Congratulations to Lee Norman Rizley for receiving the Eagle Scout Award.
Guzekowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
All right. Moving right along to new business. We're going to get to the mayor and common council appointments. This is what we do traditionally every year. We reappoint. There's mayoral appointments and common council president appointments. It's anticipated that these appointments will come out May 2. Ken, you good with that?
Yep.
So the list is there. Just for the public's sake, the mayoral appointments are the Landscape and Beautification Committee. We appoint one Alderman to that. Library Board gets one aldermatic representative. Community Development Authority gets two. Community Center Board of Directors gets one aldermatic appointment. Small Claims Committee gets one. Water and Sewer Utility Commission gets one. And there's one omission there. Our newly formed Tourism Board gets one mayoral appointment also. The common council of president appointments are as follows. Personnel Committee, there's a minimum of two, but we appoint three to that committee. Capital Improvement Committee gets three. License Committee gets three. Land Commission gets two representative, plus the mayor sits on that. Board of Health gets one representative. Emergency Government Committee Representative gets one, plus the council president. Parks, Recs, and Forestry Commission gets one. Traffic and Safety Commission gets one. And the Finance Committee gets three aldermatic appointments. And those are all done by the council president. Any questions?
Mayor Dan, I have a question. I've had several residents reach out to me with interest in committee or commission appointments. I believe the regular procedure is to submit an application.
Yes. Application could be picked up at the city clerk's office. They can fill out. It's a very simple application, listing their residence, and their experience, and their interests. And then they're kept on filing as appointments come up. We fill off that resume.
Okay. So then just refer them to the city clerk or city hall office.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. It's also on our city website as well, correct, Kathryn?
That's correct. And the vacancies, if you go to the boards and commissions, you can look at each boarding commission or committee, and it will show the members of that committee, and then whether or not there's a vacancy.
But, or hand, they still wouldn't need to fill out the application after you said it all. Gets it out of the way.
Excellent. Seeing no. I'll go ahead, Mike.
Just as a point of information on personnel this year, because the mayor has vacated that position on the Personnel Committee, it's going to be very important for the next appointment to get in there, so we can fill that out to three people in personnel.
Yes.
We have our representative city contracts coming up this year. So just for information for the two new Aldermen, it would be very important if you're interested, communicate that to the council president, because it would be a great learning experience.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Seeing nothing more in that, we can move to item nine, our vendor summary report. Please look it over, see if you have any questions. Our finance director is here. Normally has all the answers for you.
That's a tall order.
There's the pressure.
Any questions? Seeing none, motion.
It will move to approve the 2017 vendor summary report in the amount of $829,854.82.
Let's go second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Excellent. Moving right along, community development. We have a resolution over the Milwaukee Aerotropolis Development Plan. With us tonight is Doug Seymour, and he's going to shed some light on this.
Thank you. And for our two new alderpersons, it's going to be a little bit new to you, but bear with me. We'll go over a brief presentation, and we'll try and introduce you to some of the concepts that not only Oak Creek has been planning around and discussing, but all of the member communities of the Milwaukee Gateway Aerotropolis Corporation surrounding the airport and in cooperation with the private sector. So exciting things that are happening, and we'll try and go over that, and hopefully if you have any questions, whether they're tonight, tomorrow, or next week, please feel free to give me a call. So the Milwaukee Aerotropolis Development Plan, and you all have a copy of that, provides detailed information about the history behind the gateway to Milwaukee and the Milwaukee Gateway Aerotropolis Corporation. The MGAC, just as a, for a frame of reference, is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation that was formed, in essence, to foster that development, that strategic partnership between the communities, the private sector, government agencies which surround the airport, with the goal of really increasing the effectiveness of the airport as becoming a driver of regional economic development. So this plan, which is really the culmination of the cooperative efforts. Between, again, the member municipalities, the private sector, and various state agencies, serves to really align the interests of its member municipalities to make those future land use decisions that not only respect their local comprehensive plans, obviously decisions that we make as Oak Creek will impact land uses within the city of Oak Creek. But we have a greater responsibility to the region and the airport area to try to work together to make sure that the decisions that are made on a more strategic level are really serve to grow the region, because we have that responsibility, that ethic as part of the region, to really take that into account in our decisions as well. And what does that mean when the rubber hits the road? It may mean that each of our member municipalities may be chasing the same thing, whether it's a hotel, or whether it's a manufacturing plant, or whether it's an office. This plan really is in recognition of there's various strengths for each of those catalytic areas, and we'll talk about that in a bit, that maybe it doesn't make sense for all of the member municipalities to go after a hotel, or hospitality cluster, or town center. So I was really kind of taking a look at the strategic assets of the communities surrounding the airport, and developing a more cooperative regional plan that capitalizes on those assets to really drive the region forward. So all starts with the concept of Aerotropolis, and it's probably the first time you've ever heard that, right? Aerotropolis, and it's a kind of fancy word which was coined by a professor from North Carolina, Dr. John Caserta, and it really, and I'll read it, "It's a new urban forum where cities are built around airports speedily connecting time-sensitive suppliers, manufacturers, distributors, and businesspeople to distant customers, clients, and marketplaces." Kind of a long way of saying that airports are the new drivers of our today's economies. I mean, when you think about it, how cities have typically developed in the past, certainly it began along seaports and ports. As technology advanced, it became railroads. And now it's really becoming, airports are a major driver of economic development. And to the extent that Milwaukee doesn't have the same potential as O'Hare, or some of the larger airports in the area, it's still an important driver for what happens locally. And it really is our gateway to the rest of the world, in terms of how our citizens, our commerce interacts with the entire nation and the world for that matter. So what are the characteristics of an Aerotropolis? And it's more than just passengers getting on airplanes. It's how freight moves into and out of a region. And it's really about making connectivity and making connections between all the different land uses, the modes of transportation. Milwaukee is unique in a sense that we've got, we're blessed with a geography that allows us to have three major rail lines, Amtrak line, interstate highway, and the port of Milwaukee, all within a very close vicinity of the airport and the airport member community. So really, the goal of the MGAC, and we are a member of that organization, I am on the Board of Directors of that, as are members of each of the member municipalities, really it's again to leverage that to really capitalize upon the airport as a driver of economic activity. Again, we talked about the MGAC, and there's a list of members there, I won't go through them all, but it really is led up to the formation of this plan and the vision for the Aerotropolis Milwaukee, which is to be a vibrant and diverse transportation and commercial hub, a globally recognized economic engine that attracts business and people to the Milwaukee region. So with that, I am pleased to introduce Mike Han. Mike's the executive director of the Southeast Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, who worked with the MGAC to prepare the plan. He and his staff, I think Eric's here as well. So I'll let Mike kind of describe the plan. When Mike's described the plan to you, I'll kind of wrap up and show you how that really integrates with the city's comprehensive plan and what our next steps would be. Mike?
Doug, would you flip the mic on? I don't know if you can control that there. Yeah, no.
Thanks, Doug. As Doug mentioned, Eric Lynn from our staff is with me here tonight. He was one of the key people involved in developing the plan, along with the committee that was formed for that purpose. I want to thank the mayor and common council for the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about the development plan tonight. Basically, the purpose of the plan is to capitalize on the airport, to enhance the quality of life, stimulate economic investment, and promote job growth in the surrounding communities. And Doug's really given an outstanding summary of how that all fits together, and how by working together, we can really maximize the potential of the airport and the surrounding areas. The plan's basically organized around two main components, and that's the land use recommendations and the transportation recommendations. And one of the key things about the land use recommendations is the designation of Aerotropolis growth areas, and those are defined by their proximity to Mitchell International Airport, the ability to accommodate Aerotropolis supporting land uses, and also the availability of vacant or underutilized land where development, new development can proceed, or redevelopment can proceed. Within those areas, there are certain areas designated as catalytic Aerotropolis areas, and they have the potential to drive change in the growth areas. So those are the key means of driving the change that starts in those growth areas. And a third category is contributing Aerotropolis areas that support the Aerotropolis concept but aren't quite as key as those catalytic areas. We also have transportation recommendations. I'll talk a bit about those later, related to streets and highways, transit, freight transportation, and bicycle and pedestrian facilities as well. Just a little bit of an overview of those growth areas. There are three defined that include significant portions of the city of Oak Creek, the first of those being the Milwaukee South Industrial Area, which is shown in green on the map in front of you. That includes portions of the cities of Cudahy and Milwaukee as well. The 13th 27th Street area, which is shown in yellow next to that green area, also includes parts of Franklin, Greenfield, Milwaukee. And the Oakwood Road area down at the bottom, the area in orange, which is shared between parts of the city of Franklin and the city of Oak Creek. Now, the transportation recommendations come out of our recently completed Vision 2050 Regional Land Use and Transportation System Plan, and that's developed for the seven county southeastern Wisconsin region, but there are significant recommendations that bear on the city of Oak Creek and the Aerotropolis area in general. As far as street and highway improvements, arterial streets and highways, one of those is the Elm Road Interchange, which is shown at the bottom of the map here. It's the orange circle at the bottom of the map. That's a recommended new freeway interchange. Second would be extension of Lake Parkway from its current terminus to the south, as shown in orange in the eastern portion of the map here. We've also recommended capacity expansions on congested roadways, including the green portion of I-9441 that's shown here, and also a green portion of 27th Street. So we're looking at capacity expansions there. In addition to this, when highway development and streets are improved, we're looking to incorporate complete streets concepts that really accommodate all the uses of a roadway. So we're talking about pedestrians, bicyclists, transit users, and drivers. And finally, as far as public transit improvements, and here we're looking at a number of multimodal approaches to providing transit. Implementing rapid transit line between Northwest Mutual Life and downtown Milwaukee via the airport is one of the options, and that's shown in blue here on the map. That could be either a bus rapid transit, such as being considered in the Wisconsin Avenue Blue Mountain Road corridor between downtown Milwaukee and the Regional Medical Center in another location in our region, or it could be possibly a light rail type of rapid transit. Also looking at a commuter rail line, which many of you may be familiar with. It was originally proposed as a Kenosha-Racine, Milwaukee commuter rail connecting Metro coming out of Chicago and going north into downtown Milwaukee. And then actually, under this plan, it would also extend from Milwaukee out to O'Connell, so that's commuter rail, and that would certainly affect the city of Oak Creek and the Aerotropolis area. Also extending express bus route on 27th Street to Northwest Mutual Life, again. And just in general, on the local express and commuter transit services, increasing the frequency and the service hours to provide better coverage of service, and also with local transit services, extending those into areas of the Aerotropolis growth areas that would be developed. And finally, increasing the speed and frequency on the existing Amtrak Hiawatha line between Milwaukee and Chicago. Currently, there are seven daily runs on that, and there's a proposal being looked at to increase it to 10. Okay. Now, I'm going to turn it back to Doug, and he'll talk about some of the specifics between the Aerotropolis plan and the city's comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. As Mike indicated, there's the three different catalytic areas that we are focusing on. And let me first preface my remarks by saying that the Aerotropolis Development Plan is not that different from the city's comprehensive plan. I mean, there are a few things, and we'll point those out, but I think that you'll see as Oak Creek is well positioned to benefit from and contribute to the concept of an Aerotropolis, given its unique geographic characteristics and the things that have happened and the investments that you have, as a council, have made over the last couple of years. So with that, I'm going to just kind of switch to a different. Bear with me for just a second here. So for the Milwaukee South Industrial Area, I just want to point out to you a few things where, a few points of discussion, and we did this at the Plan Commission level as well, where there's either something of note, or where our comprehensive plan has some different concepts as opposed to the Aerotropolis plan. Again, the Milwaukee Aerotropolis, Milwaukee South Industrial Area, it's the area within the city of Oak Creek, which is really encompassed by, you know, the North Branch Industrial Park and essentially the areas roughly north of Rossin Avenue. Also includes MTC area, it also includes the former U.S. Postal Service site at Pennsylvania and, I'm sorry, Pennsylvania and College. With that in mind, one of the major things that I want to draw to your attention is in the area that's identified as A on your plan, which is the area which is, I'm sorry you can't see this on your screens, but it's the area north of MTC, roughly in the area of College Avenue, west of Howell Avenue. And for many years, I mean, as a matter of fact, since the airport master plan, latest iteration of the airport master plan was put in place, there was always plans for a third major runway, a parallel runway, if you will, that would have provided additional capacity for the airport. And for a number of reasons, I mean, the projections that have led up to that really haven't been borne out, and it's a combination of some of the things with the economics of airlines, you know, they're flying larger planes. Actually, the number of operations, as I understand it, and I'm not an expert in this field, but the number of operations of the airport have actually gone down. So certainly, the need for this future runway is not as pronounced as it was when the original master plan was prepared. So with that in mind, it's our understanding that the latest iteration of the master plan, which is taking place this year and next, will remove that parallel runway in plan. And what that does, it really opens up areas that would have been runway safety areas or clear zones for that future runway for development. And good case in point is, may we call some of you that we've had developmental proposals on some of the lands that either would have been within that runway safety area or adjacent to that. And even though that was a paper runway, we still had to accommodate for that, given some of the heights of the proposed developments. One of the more famous or infamous cases was where there would have been a distribution warehouse that could have been built, even though it was, you know, on 6th and College, essentially, they could have built it to a height of 28 feet, which was actually shorter than the height of some of the streetlights on the adjoining road. So, you know, I think, you know, it's always a good goal to preserve those land uses, but I think that's a good thing that, in recognition of what the reality is with this parallel runway, that the county is now opening up these lands for development. Some of these areas as well are comprehensive. Some of these areas as well, our comprehensive plan, again, drawing on the airport, when we did our comprehensive plan back in 2002, our first real plan under the Smart Growth Law, the airport was involved to the extent that we really didn't want to encourage a lot of residential development surrounding the airport. So a lot of these areas, what's here to fore had been shown as possibly residential areas, were shown mainly as office areas, and kind of with the thought that, I mean, we didn't want them to be industrial necessarily, but we didn't want to have single-family residential areas as well. The office market in the southern Milwaukee County, speculative market is challenging. And given the amount of office that is shown on our comprehensive plan and the comprehensive plans of other municipalities, it's not realistic. So with that in mind, the plan, the Aretropolis plan, calls for the conversion of some of these planned uses to a planned business kind of logistics and what have you, things of that nature. Also, again, some of those areas which are shown as kind of those air transportation areas for the future runway, again, converting over to those planned business type of uses. One major part of that is the actual runway safety, not the runway safety areas, but the areas around the existing north-south runway. And given some of the advances that have taken place, a lot of those areas that the county owns can be used for development. And in fact, the county is pursuing plans to make those available for certain types of development, which are consistent with the airport, mind you, but can be developed on those lands that are owned by Milwaukee County. So think of the lands north of Rossin Avenue, where you have the driving range, where you have the foot golf course, where you got the gardens, where you got the dog park. Those could potentially be available for development, and this plan calls for them to be developed for planned land use of that industrial or industrial commercial. Moving to the next area, which is the 13th and 27th Street area, this area really, for the city's perspective, encompasses the hospitality area around 13th and College, as well as the lands that are being developed presently in and around the interchange at Drexel Avenue and I-9441. When our original plan obviously was developed in 2002, I mean, we didn't have the interchange, and that was not in the plans at that point in time. So certainly, the land uses around that interchange are proposed to change from, you had a lot of that which was shown as mixed-use commercial-residential. We're showing it more as a planned mixed-use, kind of looking at the types of uses which we anticipate, such as the IKEA, such as the lands which are held privately in that vicinity, which can be converted into a larger mixed-use development, capitalizing on their location at that interchange. Really also looking to expand upon that hospitality cluster that exists, not only in the city of Oak Creek, but at the city, within the city of Milwaukee at 13th and College, number of different hotels there, looking to really capitalize on that and expand that area and introduce supportive businesses to that hospitality cluster. And there's a few other things, some of the single-family land uses that we've shown in our plan at the intersection of 13th and Drexel have been shown as mixed-use commercial-residential under the Aretropolis plan. And finally, the Oakwood Road area, and I'm not sure what's that. This is the area which is in the southwestern portion of the city. This is not going to cooperate, so. This is the area that Mike had introduced as the site at Elm Road Interchange. The Elm Road Interchange was planned and designed as part of the 94 North-South roadway project from the state. Unfortunately, while designed, the project was never fully implemented, given some other constraints that the state was facing at the time. And we're hopeful that that major transportation project will be completed within the next few years. Part of that is a new interchange at Elm Road, which replaces a half interchange right now at 27th Street at the county line. That interchange would connect up to the existing State Highway 241, which is 27th Street. Important thing to note there is that while the connection to the west would be funded as part of any potential project, there's potential for a local road connection to the east that would connect 13th Street to that new interchange, which would be, again, be a local project. But really, again, taking a look at some of those uses around there and how they may benefit from that new interchange, whether it's, you know, the business parks that the city's been developing in conjunction with our partners at Oakview, the Oakwood Crossing Business Park, or whether it's developing new business parks or mixed-use developments in the vicinity of that new interchange at Elm Road and PPG. Those are the types of things that would be taking advantage of this Oakwood Road area as part of that development. So those are really the impacts on the city of Oak Creek. And again, I remember my earlier remarks, that it really is not a drastic departure from where we've planned our land uses, and again, recognizing some of the assets that the city does have. So what happens next? I mean, should the council decide to endorse this plan? And that's all they're doing, they're endorsing it. This is not changing your comprehensive plan. There's a separate procedure for that, and we'll be actually going through that this year as part of a pretty extensive comprehensive plan update. So it really, again, acknowledges this planning process that has taken place, is taking place amongst the member municipalities, and really acknowledges the role of the airport in driving the future economy of the Milwaukee region, and how we as a community can play our role in that land use planning effort by kind of maximizing our assets as part of a region-wide land use plan, which really drives the future of the airport area. With that, be happy to answer any questions you have, but if there are none, ultimately, I'd like you to consider the resolution endorsing the Milwaukee Aretropolis Development Plan.
Thank you, Doug. At this time, questions and comments, anybody? Go ahead, Nick.
Thanks, Doug, for that overview. I, in a previous community, I represented that community on Airport Economic Development Committee for Austin Straubel, and one of the things that we kept running into in terms of developing the airport lands owned by the county was the county typically doesn't desire to divest of property. Even if that is desirable, is that even a doable situation with the FAA oversight of the divestiture process? So I know the county-owned lands are a small part of this much greater planning area, but are they looking at, you know, long-term leasing situations, holding the underlying title to the property, doing long-term lease situations on that, on those properties? Are they looking to retain those or actually divest?
I think it's a mixture of both, actually, where they're able to divest of those properties. Certainly, a procedure is put in place for those non-park lands to be sold off by the county if it makes sense. Many of those properties, and you're correct, probably will stay in county hands, just given their location. Obviously, you probably don't want to have different people entitled right at the end of your main runway, but you need to have that level of control. So I anticipate that much of that will be accomplished via some innovative partnerships, land leases, what have you, with the county staying in ownership.
Just to be clear, those improvements, whether the county retained underlying title or not, those improvements would be taxable, the personal property would be taxable. So it's not just fostering, you know, tax-exempt property development, so there is taxable improvements on those tax-exempt property.
Globally, and maybe Mike from the SURPAC can shed a little light on this, obviously, we're looking at this as a, from an Oak Creek-centric kind of standpoint, but obviously, this represents a seven-county game plan. And I'm wondering globally if SURPAC is going to drive and coordinate this with some of the entities that exist to drive economic development, and in fact, it's going to be kind of a marching orders for those folks, or if they're going to be kind of free-will and doing their own thing, or if this is kind of going to be a guiding force for that kind of stuff metropolitan-wide.
Well, I'll certainly let Mike address any questions from the perspective of SURPAC, but from the perspective of the MGAC and the Gateway to Milwaukee, we've already really changed the conversation of how the southern part of Milwaukee County is viewed. I think you've seen some recent press, as a matter of fact, regarding this plan itself, and really changing, seeing how by working together, you can really change the dialogue, whether it's, you know, the 84 South development in Greenfield or the Drexel Town Square development, just some of the things that are happening down there. And you really didn't see that conversation taking place before. And part of that was, is that we really didn't have that kind of regional strategy to brand ourselves and to show off the assets that we did have. I think one of the aldermen for the city of Milwaukee really put it well in saying we were too quiet, you know, we didn't make enough noise. So, and we really wanted to show off to not only Milwaukee region, but the state and the rest of the country, that we've got a lot of assets that really make us attractive as a place to do business. So moving forward, whether it's M7, whether it's the Water Council, whether it's MWORK and those regional economic development organizations, they have Milwaukee Aretropolis area on their radar screens. And part of the rollout of this plan, once it's endorsed by its member municipalities, is to work with the commercial realtor organizations, such as the Commercial Association of Realtors of Wisconsin, or NAAP, which is the Office and Properties Realtor Group, to really sustain that interest in the airport area as a place to do business, and really hopefully kind of coordinate our development efforts so that rather than really competing head-to-head with one another, that we can put development where it makes sense in accordance with this plan, and really put our best foot forward, speaking with one voice for the region.
Because, you know, big picture speaking, unless you're coordinating to drive the population growth and job recruitment growth, I mean, this is just an exercise in putting colors on a piece of paper. I mean, without those kind of things being organized and planned at, you know, 30,000 feet, this is futile.
And that, quite frankly, has been the challenge, and we've been at this for a number of years, trying to decide, well, what is the role of this organization in doing that? Because, you know, just human nature kind of dictates that, well, I work for the city of Oak Creek, I live in Oak Creek, you know, so I'm, first and foremost, always going to look out for Oak Creek, but recognizing that Oak Creek is part of this larger region that can benefit from the coordinated development of the airport area, as opposed to just kind of being the lone wolf and trying to go at it from that perspective. So really kind of working with our partners, both in the public and private sector, to show them the greater good, if you will, and how by working together, we can make each of our member communities or private sector organizations or public organizations like the DOT, like the DNR, that much better.
What else?
I would say just a few comments from Plan Commission when this was discussed, you know, this is truly, like you said, kind of a global look, partly, I shouldn't say partly, it's probably long overdue. Everyone was looking at this saying, you know, where has this been? Well, this is a real, a very good template. But I think from Plan Commission's standpoint, one of the concerns I heard is that they were concerned that this was going to take over or come in place of our handsome plan, and that's not doing the compliment. That's kind of some of the discussions we had. And then also that the, they're concerned, this vision, most part Plan Commission all on board.
Local land use decisions will always be made locally. You're not going to have the MGAC telling you what you can and can't do in your municipality. I think that the effort here is to kind of, to hopefully show you how it makes sense to work together towards a more strategic approach towards land use planning to help us or other member municipalities kind of grow their economies.
The land use is kind of a great template. The transportation, making sure we have the right strength, fault on that is really going to probably be the determinant of whether or not this has been a useful exercise or not.
Yes.
You know, the perfect example is running freight through the intermodal station downtown, you know, the cutoff loop, highly important to do, those kind of things. I know there's been a lot of thought put into that, but getting it done is actually what's going to matter.
Yeah, we can't, obviously, we can't and won't stop once we get the plan adopted. I mean, the heavy lifting starts once the plan is adopted, and trying to get that implemented through the policies of not only the government, but the private sector, but the member municipalities. And that's where the regional cooperation will really pay off, in building the coalition that we have as part of the MGAC.
Okay, guys, anything? All right, I guess I'll throw my two cents out there. I like the plan. As Doug said, it's not a radical departure from our own comprehensive plan, which really speaks volume of our own staff and our own vision in the city of Oak Creek. We recognize we had this airport. It pays testament to how our staff laid out and put our comprehensive plan together, that it really doesn't depart from what the general idea is around an airport. So very well done from that perspective. This plan was probably needed a few years back, without a doubt. I like to see the cooperation between the communities at the 30,000-foot level. As Milwaukee's picking up steam downtown and wants to become a convention destination, we're going to have to feed into that. That airport's going to grow. As O'Hare gets overpopulated and people are coming up this way, that is going to provide tremendous opportunities for communities like Oak Creek, St. Francis, Cudahy, and we need to be prepared for that, and I think this is a step in the right direction. So preparing those areas to mixed-use commercial, whether it's 13th and College or College in Pennsylvania, that particular area to suit the use and bring in a development, I think is key. And for lack of a better word, for the right hand to know what the left is doing between communities is absolutely huge, because you don't want to double down efforts. So I think this makes tremendous sense. I'm happy to see it. Our airport's kind of unique. It sits right in an urban area. Most airports don't do that, so there's far more challenges with it. So regionally, I agree with Ken, I mean, transportation's going to be key. In the future, transportation is going to drive everything. There's going to have to be a need for it and a want for it, but again, as we have those locales in Oak Creek, and you're seeing it pick up, we have hotels going ourselves, different venues coming in, businesses, we're going to need that transportation as a little bit different look. Those are challenges. I, for one, it would be great if they finished out Elm Road. I was disappointed when the KRM stalled, and I think it's dead, but not sure about that. Be great, I mean, it would really drive our way, it would give it a whole different dynamic. Again, I think it's just a complement to our comprehensive plan, and I think it's very well done. So leave it at that.
Thank you.
All right.
Great to get 94 done.
Yeah.
And Ryan Road.
And 13.
Just getting a plug in.
All right, that's enough. Anyways, with that, if there's no more questions for Doug or Mike, entertain motion.
Yeah, Dukenyak moves to adopt Resolution Number 11808-041817 endorsing the Milwaukee Aretropolis Development Plan.
I'm sorry, you did argue. I did not see that. Come on up, Arden. We'll hold the motion for now.
Arden Dugna, 8540 South Pennsylvania Avenue. Appreciate all the hundreds of hours of work that's gone through to try to plan the roads 50 years in advance. However, there are a couple of things that troubled me. As I was reading this, because we were concerned about the College Avenue, Howell Avenue here a few months ago, is it true that this Aretropolis restricts hotels to the north of Oak Creek?
The plan, Arden, shows a hospitality cluster at the area where the existing hotels are at 13th College Avenue, does not mean, again, that you cannot put a hotel, for instance, at Drexel Town Square, which we are doing. It really kind of focuses the efforts toward making that, providing that with the services such as restaurants, possibly a conference center or area, and other supportive facilities that really make that hotel cluster more appealing to people who, for instance, don't, who are going to a conference in downtown, who don't want to pay $200 a night potentially, you don't want to pay for parking. I mean, the airport area hotels certainly have assets that other areas don't have, and really, it's an effort to capitalize on that. But it's not, again, nor would it be with any other land use, saying that you, Oak Creek, or you Franklin cannot do anything. You cannot develop a hotel there. It's merely suggesting that by kind of thinking strategically about your role as part of that plan, you know, we can make sure that if you do develop a hotel within that area, that you've got...
you've got the industries there to support it, whether it's restaurants, whether it's other service amenities like that. Again, nothing in this plan says, tells Oak Creek, tells Oak Creek, tells Milwaukee what they can or can't do. It's really merely advisory to them when they look at their own comprehensive plan.
Well, that's what I've read, is that hotels would be north of, and that's one of the problems this Plan Commission had. They tried to get something located on, and all they could get is storage. So my next question is, I recognize this as needed for transportation and road planning, but we have another problem, another group, and it's called the Tourism Commission now. The state has set this up. Apparently, this has not, tourism does not concern Aeropolis. Is that true? I suspect...
I certainly wouldn't characterize that as being the case. I think tourism will be an important entity in terms of implementing the comprehensive plan of this community and implementing the programs of the city. And to the extent that what happens with the Aeropulus plan increases the attractiveness of the Oak Creek area as a place to visit, it's something that tourism will take a great interest in. But at this point in time, the Tourism Commission is not involved, nor should it be involved, in the formation of land use plans.
The other item that I am really surprised and pleasantly surprised at was this report that the engineering department gave to the DNR on the stormwater. You know that this map that they have, our environmental engineer has produced, has outlined every area of Oak Creek for the water flow area, the flow areas. Now, it's somewhat interesting that the southwestern Wisconsin Tours Planning Commission has to approve every sewer, every water main that's put in. Does not the Aeropolis have to be concerned with water flow? If so, Oak Creek has it, probably the only community in the county that has done that kind of work. And I certainly, I know, Oak Creek has a number of wetland, water flow, you know as well as I, that we have difficulty in getting stormwater into various areas. It's not addressed at all in this.
Doug, you want to put that to rest, sir?
Yeah, I think certainly while your comments regarding environmental corridors and the need to properly plant for stormwater are well-taken, I think that as part of this higher-level land use plan, and these types of more detailed plans, which are implemented by the municipalities, we didn't, again, we didn't get to that level, never intended to get to that level. That's something that certainly the Regional Planning Commission, in one of its many capacities, has worked with communities on, but not as part of the Aeropulus Development Plan.
It's available from Oak Creek, though, thanks to our environmental engineer. He did a tremendous job, our engineering department. I was just so amazed to see this, because Oak Creek has had problems with stormwater.
Thank you, Arden, and my apologies for overlooking you there. Back to the motion. Did we finish the motion?
The sentence wasn't finished, so...
If you could please restate the motion.
Dukenyak moves to adopt resolution number 11808-041817 endorsing the Milwaukee Aeropulus Development Plan.
Let's go, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate you guys coming out tonight. Moving right along to engineering, we have a resolution granting WE Energies a permanent underground electrical easement at 6140 West Oakwood Road. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there's been a request from WE Energies for a 20-foot-wide permanent easement to eventually install buried electrical facilities, and this is at, runs along the south property line of parcel 641 West Oakwood Road. And I've got it up on the screen, and you might not be able to see the pointer, but that is a large vacant, city-owned parcel. And for reference, to the west of that property is Canadian Pacific Railroad, and then the PPG property, and then to the east of that property is the developing Oakview Business Park. And the southern, this is the southernmost pond of Oakview Business Park. You recall, immediately east of that, there is a planned WE Energies substation, and so that this is all infrastructure that would be, you know, part of that as that gets developed. So basically, it is a request from WE Energies to secure that easement for their future facilities, again, buried electrical. Also, very hard to see here on the screen, but there, paralleling this is existing American Transmission Company towers, the tall towers. So for what it's worth, this easement would be crossing property that really will not develop in the future. This parcel, again, has the towers already paralleling the future burial lines, and also greatly encumbered by wetlands and floodway. The, you know, WE Energies contends that this will enhance the power grid, and it will, and would recommend that this does get granted.
And just to be clear, this is going to serve a future substation?
Yes.
They won't be removing their above ground tower, right? This will be in addition to...
That would remain, yep, in addition, correct. Keep in mind, the only financial liability is if we ever request that these lines moved for any particular reason. Otherwise, it should encumber us economically at all.
Right, that's very unlikely, just with the, you know, the, just the landscape, the wetlands, the floodway.
No questions, comment, motion?
They'll move to approve resolution 11806-041817 granting to WE Energies a 20-foot-by 777.25-feet permanent underground electric easement at 641 West Oakwood Road, project number 13054.
Let's go a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 14, Gale will move to grant a 2016-17 Reserve Class B Combination License to Mark R. Yonkini Agent CUBDTS LLC doing business as Cubanitas 7973 South Main Street with release of license, subject to receipt of final sanitaryian approval and release of an occupancy permit.
Let's go a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Item 14, Gale will move to grant a 2016-17 Reserve Class B combination license to Mark R. Yonkini Agent CUBDTS LLC doing business as Cubanitas 7973 South Main Street with release of license, subject to receipt of final sanitaryian approval and release of an occupancy permit.
Let's go a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Item 14, Gale will move to grant a 2016-17 Reserve Class B beer license to Gin Kennedy Agent Kennedy Enterprises LLC, doing business as Board and Brush, Oak Creek 8880 South Howell Avenue, Suite 800, with release of license, subject to receipt of final sanitaryian approval and release of an occupancy permit.
Let's go a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Item 15, Gale will move to grant a 2016-17 Reserve Class B combination license to Mark Herzog Agent H of Southeast Wisconsin LLC, doing business at Victors again, 9117 South 5th Avenue, with release of license, subject to receipt of final sanitaryian approval and release of an occupancy permit.
Guzekowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along, next, we will entertain, consider a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.85, parentheses 1, parentheses G, to consider proposed settlement agreement and release of claim with Michael J. Dombrowski and Nicole M. Vanzlo regarding damage to their property at 9233 South 15th Avenue, sustained on August 9, 2016.
They'll move to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub G, to consider a proposed settlement agreement and release of claim with Michael J. Dombrowski and Nicole M. Vanzlo regarding damage to their property at 9233 South 15th Avenue, sustained on August 9, 2016. They'll move to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.85, Sub 1, Sub G, to consider a proposed settlement agreement and release of claim with Michael J. Dombrowski and Nicole M. Vanzlo regarding damage to their property at 9233 South 15th Avenue, sustained on August 9, 2016.
Let's go a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we will convene into closed session, and we will reconvene into open session upon conclusion of the meeting. Roll call.
Alderman, Guzekowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Right. Is there a motion or recommendation?
Sure. Dukenyak moves to approve settlement to Michael J. Dombrowski and Nicole Vanzlo against the city of Oak Creek, and again, it's in the Third Aldermanic District.
Go a second.
We need a receipt of, a release of liability statement?
Liability to the city of Oak Creek?
And I mean, I'm certainly, I'll reach out to the residents, would you like them to have...
I think just restate the motion with the release of claim in there, correct?
Yes, with release of claim.
Okay, so...
Subject to signature and release of claim against the city of Oak Creek.
So Dukenyak moves to approve a settlement agreement and pending a release of claim by Michael J. Dombrowski and Nicole Vanzlo against the city of Oak Creek.
I'll reconcur.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Excellent. Motion for adjournment?
Guzekowski, a motion to adjourn, 8:20. Go a second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzekowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Great, I'd like to thank everybody who is streaming us live, and I encourage you to get out there and discover and celebrate Oak Creek. Thank you.